Go ahead and call to order the called meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council for August the 13th. And item one on the agenda, consider closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1, Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body appointments. Need a motion and a second.
I would move that we enter into executive session for the reasons stated and allow any of the necessary individuals to join us.
I second.
All right, motion by the Vice Mayor and second by Mr. Farnham. And if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Confy that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right, and so on, continuing on this closed, on this called meeting agenda, we have item two, which is consider appointments to boards and commissions.
I would move that we table item two.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to table from Mr. Hartley and a second from Mr. Farnham. And if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right, the called meeting is adjourned. And we're gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of Bristol, Virginia City Council for August 13th, 2019. If you all would join me in a moment of silence, please. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you all for coming out tonight. It's been a little while since we met last. We didn't have a meeting at the end of July, so we've got a, got a lot going on on the agenda tonight. One thing that I wanted to mention, we've got some, got some good events going on in the city in the next few days. We've got Food City Family Race Night is tomorrow night, so all, y'all, please be sure to come out for that. And we have also got the opening of the Mendota Trailhead on August the 16th at, I believe, 10:00 AM. So if you can make it to that, that'll be good. It's, it's gonna be a nice thing to have the start of this Mendota Trail right here in Bristol. And right after that, Don't Eat Breakfast First, we have a, we have a food truck thing going on on the 16th as well down here at Cumberland Park. And I'm ready to eat about 5,000 calories in one hour, so hopefully everyone else is too. And that's all I've got. Has anybody else got anything?
Yeah, a couple of things, as you say, it's been a while since we met, but I did want to both let people know if they didn't already and congratulate two people that were appointed by the governor to different boards. The first of those is the Principal at Highland View, Pam Davis Vaught, who was appointed to the State Board of Education. And also Lisa Porter, who is with the Bristol Housing Authority, was appointed to the Virginia Housing Development Authority. That's really great news. They're both very capable ladies, and I know they will serve in that capacity well, but it's also great for us that we have two people from Bristol representing our viewpoint on the, on state boards at the Commonwealth. So congratulations to both of those very deserving ladies.
All right, city manager's comments.
Yes, I wanna advise council, Mayor, you took some of my thunder, but-
You're welcome.
August 16th, the Mendota Trail will be opening out, out near Island Road at 10:00 AM, so there's a grand opening ceremony for that. Also, the food truck event that the mayor mentioned will start in Cumberland Square Park at 11:30 on August the 16th. We'll have several food trucks from around the region here showcasing what they can do. And then also, on August the 19th through the September the 9th, you will notice that the helicopter in Cumberland Square Park will be missing for a period of time. Bell Helicopter is refurbishing that helicopter and repainting it free of charge to the city, and they will be putting that back around September and the 9th. Also, I wanna reiterate, Family Race Night is tomorrow night here in downtown Bristol. Last year, it was down at the racetrack, and we're happy to have them back this year. And then, of course, we have racing all weekend.
All right, thank you. So, item C, members to be presented by, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. First person we have signed up is Larry Gardner.
I just came down here to thank city manager and Chad Osborne, which I come down here a couple of months ago. I had complaints about joining property and trash that piled up on it. They already, big committee, they got on it, they got it done, and I didn't, I thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a, it's a good job.
Thank you. Let us know anytime you have an issue, we'll be more happy to take care of it again.
Well, there'll probably be more because I've got neighbors, they got mad. Apparently, they don't like change. You know, if you don't change a little bit, then you're gonna have your whole neighborhood to ask to do it. I do thank you.
You're welcome. Glad we could do it.
I'm sure that'll be somewhere along down that line. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next person we have signed up is Victor Smith.
Honorable mayor and members of the chamber, my name is Victor Smith, I live at 169 Chester Hill Road. Tonight, I'm here to complain about what's on that picture. Oh, you haven't got it yet. As you'll note, there's a lot of debris in the middle of the street, blocking any rain runoff to the, to the city sewer system. That grass is my grass, but I did not put it in the street. Somebody else did, my neighbor. That person thinks that she owns the lawn right out to this curb, but I have news for her, there's about a 10-foot easement for a sidewalk in case we have that much population. So I put my trash out beyond the curb so that it doesn't block any rain runoff, because we're on a hill. As you note, there's three mailboxes on the upper side, and there's another mailbox on the lower side. It is a US Mail code that the mailman does not need to leave his vehicle to deliver mail to your mailbox. Now, does he have to back his vehicle up to run around some obstacle that you've placed in the street? You'll note there is a mailbox just beyond that grass. I'd like to see the code enforcement officer to enforce more of the rules of the city's codes, particularly putting stuff in the street. Now, I live on a right-of-way, which is about 400 feet from that mailbox, and is about a three to four degree grade. In 97, I had a ruptured esophagus, and the acid from my stomach burnt my lungs, so I'm short of wind. And I do walk up once in a while, but I always have to stop to catch my breath. So, in the meantime, I take my truck and I drive up to the street and come in on the wrong direction so I can get to one of those three mailboxes to pick up my mail. I'd like to see that, that enforcement of keeping the trash out of the street. Now, I did speak to Mike Martin this morning because he picked up my trash, and I mentioned to him that I was coming over here to bring this matter up to you, to see if we couldn't do something about putting trash in the street. Now, I drive around the city once in a while, and I notice there are people who like to put this trash out in the street instead of back of the curb. And there, and you all know that there's an ordinance pertaining to that matter. I want to thank you for your audience. Have a good day, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next person we have signed up is Michael Pollard.
Thank you, gentlemen of the council. My name is Michael Pollard, I live at 101 Ashley Drive. On this occasion, I'm speaking not on behalf of, but concerning my role on the planning commission. There's an issue, a recent change that was made at the planning commission's recommendation that the city council then approved. That is, which turns out that the state preempted us by mandating the same thing before we recommended it, but we didn't know that at the time. Basically, that is that the planning commission members are moving from being on a three-year rotation to a four-year rotation. My recommendation is simply that, at this time, which is the perfect time, that those be shifted to have two-year, two members that are appointed during a non-election year for city council, and two members that are appointed, one each, for the years that have a city council election. That way, there'll be one member elected during an election year, two members appointed, appointed during a non-election year, one member appointed during an election year, two members appointed during a non-election year. That way, even if the council member appointment changes, there will still only be two members of the city, of the planning commission that change at any given time. That'll give us a little more continuity, and that would be my recommendation. At this point, I mentioned that this is the ideal time, because that could be handled by taking one of the members that currently has one year left, and that's not me, so it doesn't affect me one way or the other. I'm making it as a recommendation that doesn't have personal benefit. Take one of the members that has one year left on his or her appointment, and then either next year, reappoint that person for two years, or at this time, extend that person's appointment for an additional two years, because that way, only one member needs to change, and then we'll get on the new rotation cycle. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last person we have signed up is Jackie Naflin.
Jackie Naflin, 21, McArthur Circle, Bristol, Virginia. I would like to echo as well to the city manager, don't you all throw anything at me on this one. Thank you for the promptness of the issue that I had with the neighbor next door. Mine wasn't just the high grass. He has big old tree-moving trucks where he trimmed trees and so forth, and they're, it's just huge, in Virginia hills, right next to my home. But the grass was cut, and so that does look a whole lot better, so I'm really grateful for that. And it's grateful to the city too, as well. Whenever the word goes out, people come and complain, and they really wanna see something done, and they see something done, and you see the evidence of that. When people come in and, and say, "Thank you." So I say, "Thank you, I think I'll keep you another year." I wanted to, I signed up to talk about the school, so I'm gonna do it real fast. You know, it was in the paper and so forth, and the echo is going out. I don't know how many phone calls you all have received, sir, and Mr. Mumpower, I don't know, emails or whatever that you may have received, but, Mr. Mayor, the sound is going out about the segregation of the schools being joined right there in the middle, that it's not gonna work. The blow numbers of 5 million, 4 million, so forth, 'cause I went to the school board meeting, and, and I'm hoping that the city council actually does its own review and so forth, because only three of the properties were looked at and two of them weren't. I'd like to know why that was, but if there's a presentation to you all, and, and I know that we're getting ready to have another forum, because that was what the agreement was at the school board meeting, and, and I assume that the public was invited to come as well, which we can't speak, but I wanna speak to you now. We're really looking for a way where we can pull this together in a, in a better financial manner to where we're able to do it, it, it can happen, and so forth. But to say that it, we're segregating kids, kids are already segregated. You've got most of your minority kids at Highland View now. We were getting ready, and this is what I told the superintendent and the board, I said that, he called them blue people, yellow people, green people. The green people was Stonewall, the red people was Washington League, the blue people were the Highland View, and the yellow people, which was the big era that you saw, the, where, was Virginia, was Van Pelt. And when, and so V was real huge and so forth, and it was just showing that it's, it's not gonna work. And my statement was, and I finished. My statement was, well, if you're getting ready to bus 600 people up to, up to exit seven to fill up in that school, why can't you bus and, and fix that what you're calling now is segregated? So I hope that that sound went out. I got a lot of calls on that, and parents are upset about the thought, well, you're saying that they don't need a new school? And that's the question there. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, into the regular agenda. Item one, consider public hearing of an ordinance to repeal section one of the appendix of chapter 34 of the city code of ordinances relating to ambulance fees. And hereby, open the hearing. And staff, comment.
All right, council, this is a section of chapter 34 of the city code of ordinances that deals with ambulances. The definition of an ambulance within the city is any private vehicle that is outfitted to be a, used for the transportation of patients in a, in a vehicle to emergency rooms or a doctor's offices. So the emphasis on this is a private vehicle, not a city-owned vehicle. But more importantly, the appendix goes back to 1966, and the fee in 1966 was 15 and $20, depending on if it was a non-emergency or an emergency transport. Plus, it also allowed for a $3 charge for oxygen, if oxygen was used. It didn't say anything about anything else, but it did mention oxygen, which I kinda find funny as a lawyer. That's the one thing that it mentioned. So what I'm suggesting is, we repeal that section, it's just old, it's outdated, it doesn't comply with how things operate today in today's environment, and it will allow for private ambulance services to charge whatever they need, deem necessary in transporting patients.
All right, thank you. Seeing as no one has signed up for public comment, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. And item two, consider second reading and adoption of an ordinance to add section 14-11 to the city code pertaining to unlawful feeding of waterfowl in the city of Bristol, Virginia. Staff, report.
Counsel, this is for the second hearing of this ordinance, or the second reading of the ordinance. A public hearing was advertised on June the 17th and June the 24th, and the hearing was held on June the 25th. The first reading of the ordinance was held on July the 9th of 2019. We haven't met since that time. You have seen a presentation from Animal Control Officer Josh Legel, who's here tonight, in case you all have any further questions in regards to this ordinance, or any of the other matters that pertain to the waterfowl in the city of Bristol.
All right, no one's signed up for public comment on this, so I'm looking for a motion and a second for second reading of the ordinance.
I move that we have second reading by caption only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for second reading of the ordinance by caption only by Mr. Hartley and a second from Mr. Farnham. Council discussion.
I just, one question, and I know I'd already asked the city manager this, but during the presentation, we were concerned about public properties, particularly the area around Eastern Little League and Cumberland Square Park, but this would also apply to private properties if they had issues with people feeding ducks in, in the private area.
That's correct. That's correct. It applies to any property within the city limits of the city of Bristol.
I was just gonna say, I appreciate Mr. Legel's work. I know we've talked several times and talked about the issue of overfeeding, overpopulation, so hopefully this, this will help.
So you said it applies to private property as well?
That's correct. Any, any property within the city limits of the city of Bristol.
Now, would that be just upon the private business owner to call and say, "Hey, somebody's feeding the ducks, you need to enforce this," or would this just be?
Well, they have to follow the ordinance as well. They would have to post a sign that says, you know, "No feeding waterfowl" in order for it to be effective for that location. And then, if they did see that happening, they would need to contact either the police department through dispatch or 911 so that an officer could come out, or they would have to go to the magistrate's office and take a complaint out themselves in order to have that enforced.
How long after, assuming we pass this, how long after this is passed will the sign, will it take for the signs to be up?
The ordinance will not go into effect until 30 days after today, and, but we'll have those signs up, they are in the process of being prepared right now, and we'll have those signs up here in the very near future.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll on this.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right, we'll proceed to reading the ordinance by caption only, please.
An ordinance to add section 1411 to the city code pertaining to unlawful feeding of waterfowl in the city of Bristol, Virginia.
Short and sweet, thank you. Next item is, we need a motion, a second for adoption of the ordinance.
I move that we adopt the ordinance.
A second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Hartley and a second from Mr. Farnham. Is there any further council discussion? Clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right, item three, consider second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend chapter 70 of the city code relating to collections. Staff, report.
Counsel, this is, goes back all the way in the springtime when we were discussing amending the city code for ordinances in regards to waste collection. We have made the changes the council has recommended, they are in your packet. The public hearing was advertised on May the 6th and the 13th, and the hearing was held on May the 14th. The first reading of the ordinance was held June 25th of 2019. We did not have a discussion or vote on this matter on July 9th. I think the meeting went a little bit longer than we expected that night, and there were some other changes we needed to update as well. So it has now been put off to tonight's meeting, and, and the other thing I wanna mention, Mr. Smith had brought up a fact about grass, and in section 70-58 of the code, it states, "Grass trimmings, hedge trimmings, and leaves shall be placed at curbside and piles to facilitate collection by the city vacuum equipment." Based on the location of that grass, it appeared that that was probably about the best location for it, unless Mr. McCulloch has other suggestions.
I'd like to go see the area.
In question, I think I've been out there, I think I know where he lives. And if it, if it's up on the grass, it starts to kill the person's grass out in the road as long as cars can get by both ways, and I don't think we really, I'd have to look at the drainage, though, to make sure.
Are you referring to the picture that was-
Yes.
-given to us? You think that's the best place to repile grass?
I mean, just based on a quick review of that picture, is, I mean, without going out there and actually seeing it, when it comes to the vacuum truck, it's difficult if it's put too far back off of the, off of the roadway.
Well, what I'm seeing here, there's plenty of room in the grass, and in my opinion, this does not need to be in the road.
I'm not saying it does, I'm just saying, based on just looking at that picture, what I'm seeing, without going out there and looking at it, because I can't tell the depth of perception based on where those mailboxes are located, and I just took a quick glance at that picture, so it's something we just need to look at. The next-
Well, it's the grass in the road that is clogging up our drains when we have the heavy rains washing down the streets, and making it impossible for two cars to pass on some of our streets. We've got streets that people are piling it out there in the streets, and you gotta do this going up the road, and you gotta sit and wait for somebody else to pass around. And I thought that our code that we're passing tonight was gonna straighten this out.
The code that we're passing tonight is the exact code that you all, and I think there were even changes made to that previously, that specific section, and that has been addressed as council-directed back at all the meetings that we had previously about this. And trying to see if there's another-
But it said curbside. So is there-
That's correct, but there's no, there's no curb at that side. That, that's just strictly pavement that butts right into, there's not a curb right there at that side.
So what's the legal definition or technical definition of a curb, from a, from a VDOT standpoint?
It'd be either asphalt or concrete that sticks six inches or so above the edge of ass, of pavement.
So asphalt to grass is not a curb?
Technically, no. It would be the edge of pavement, I would view that as the same thing. The curb sort of represents the edge of the, the driving lane, so I would, I would interpret that to be the edge of the driving lane.
So this is, in your opinion, a violation of this code?
It's, it's not behind the curb, that's correct. If it doesn't interfere with traffic, see, all over the city, we've got people that place it in, in the asphalt, and it doesn't interfere, like down Euclid Avenue, for instance, they put it in some of the parking spaces. But it's difficult with the trees to be able to get the boom truck in there, or the, the grass truck behind the curb. It just depends on the situation, and I guess it'd be, we'd be better served if we can be a little flexible on the interpretation of that.
I agree with that, but this scenario right here is what's being abused in this city.
Yeah, and like I say, I'd actually have to go look at it and see where it's placed to see how difficult it is for cars to get around. And I don't know the answer to it without going out specifically seeing it.
And we also mentioned the mailboxes, we don't want to, to impede that.
Yeah, if it's in front of a mailbox, then, then it is a problem. It prevents the mail carrier from leaving mail.
Well, I mean, the bottom line is, when you, when you go drive around the city, 90% of all of, all of the roads in front of every house, has almost all of that is designated for parking, or mail truck delivery, or someone to, to pass and safely go by. So to have something like that is not good. You don't want the clippings or the trees sitting on the pavement. It's not conducive to someone able to park, someone riding a bicycle, someone on a motorcycle, someone on a car. I mean, you're asking for a safety violation, there are, so there are exceptions, but 90% of the roads, 90% of places, maybe 95, that's not okay. You know, that, that should not be what we do. You know, it should be sitting off of the pavement, in the grass, and if the boom truck can't physically get there because of the physical aspects of the truck, then as a city, we should address that with that land, you know, that private person, you know, say, "Look, we need to find a spot on your property here to put this, 'cause we can't physically get to it," and work out an agreement. But that should be the exception, you know, not just general, you know, pound it like that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd agree, 'cause I can tell you, you think of my house, I put it in my yard. If I did that and put it in the road, it would cause a major problem where I live. And so it kills a very small area of my grass, and I just, that's, you know, it's very, it's right there at the corner, but it typically kills the grass. But that's where I put all my grass, put my leaves and everything, so, you know, that's just part of it. But if I put it in the road, if I did that where I live, that would cause some serious traffic problems.
Yes.
And Chester Hill Road is a dead-end road, too, so-
Yeah. It, it, where his, his entrance is, is right in a curve, and so it is, it's, it's kind of an awkward spot. He doesn't have a lot of room to put it, and that's part of the problem there.
And can you all, can you all follow up on this and kinda check in? And can you all, can you all follow up on this and kind of check in and see the exact situation there?
Yeah, we will.
Okay. All right. So it looks like no one signed up for public comment, so I need a, looking for a motion, a second, for second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
I'll make that motion by, second reading by caption only.
Second.
All right. So the motion for caption only, second reading, is made by Mr. Hartley, and the second from Mr. Farnham. Is there any further council discussion?
Yes, there is. I know that I voted yes on this first go-around, because I thought this situation was resolved. In light of this new information, that the terminology of curbside is not lining up with what I perceive as curbside, I'm gonna, can I make a motion?
There's been a motion right now for the second reading of the ordinance. I think that's where we're at.
Well, we're in a discussion, but I think what Kevin's trying to say is valid. I think, you know, we're, we've been doing it the way we've been doing it for a long time, and so we've got, we've got to kind of do it right. You know, we don't want to rush and change the ordinance and then have situations like this still occurring. That's just not the right thing to do. So if we take another week or two and get this resolved to where, you know, the language is proper, and then we're all gonna be happy with it, that's the right thing to do. Otherwise, we're gonna have more and more issues coming up that's gonna be, you know, something we're not happy with, and we'll end up having to change it again. So we ought to just table it right now, let the city staff get a chance to dig into this a little more, get it right, and then come back. It's not that urgent, in my opinion.
Can we table it, or do we have to reject it and bring it back?
The motion right now is, for a second reading by caption only is what the motion is right now. Here's what I'll say, gentlemen. We have gone over this ad nauseam. We have changed everything that we could possibly think of in regards to what council wanted. There is always going to be a situation that does not comply with these ordinances. We have to deal with those as they come up. If we're gonna try to have an exception for every street in this city, then we need to just go down by each street, specifically list each street and where they should put their grass and tree clippings. That would be the only way that every single person in this city knows exactly where their grass is supposed to go. It appeared to me that Mr. Smith was here because he put the grass in the grass, I think's what he said, and that his neighbor, for whatever reason, pushed it into the roadway, is what he said tonight. It wasn't Mr. Smith that put it. And, you know, as much as I'd like to sit here and tell each and every one of you all that every, that ordinances will fit everybody perfectly, it's not gonna happen. And I appreciate what Mr. Wingard's saying, what Mr. Mumpower's saying, but at the end of the day, we have to deal with this the best way that we can, and right now, there's more curbs in this city than there probably are non-curb streets, and that was one of the reasons for that language in there.
I understand that, and I respect your concerns there. And you're right, there is no one answer that's gonna, no one situation that's gonna solve everything, but this has been a problem for a long, long time in this city. And if we are not gonna fix this, and this is a major problem, then there was not clarity all the way through these discussions, because you and I have had this discussion multiple times on debris being in the right-of-way, in the roads where vehicles belong, not trash, not debris. So there was a breakdown somewhere, and even though there's been a lot of discussion, the terminology, the definitions are not lining up with the fixes to the problem.
Then what I would suggest is we just amend the ordinance to state that no grass should ever, no grass, trees, brush, or anything should ever touch pavement.
Well, see, you can't hardline it like that, because there's always special circumstances.
And that's what we're saying here. There's always a special circumstance, and the circumstance that arose here is, a neighbor put the grass into the roadway. It wasn't Mr. Smith that put it there, it was a neighbor that put it there. That was, I take it, it was your grass, is that correct? It was his grass, his neighbor, either, I don't want to say that they did anything wrong and accuse them of a crime that they may not have committed, but somewhere or another, his neighbor put that grass into the roadway. It wasn't Mr. Smith, he was doing it correctly, and somewhere or another, it got into the roadway, not by the doing of the landowner.
I understand that, but in passage, in the passage tonight, the way that it's written with curbside, this is a non-issue to the city.
Can, where do you see that it says curbside? Because I'm looking at 7059, and it says that it shall not be within a vehicle travel lane, a sidewalk, or somewhere people would walk. So to me, that's what I think we had talked about before, where cars had dropped.
I was looking at 758, and then I knew there was another piece on there that talked about, I couldn't find it.
758 says, section D, the version I'm looking at, says also says within a vehicle travel lane, which is what we had talked about. So I think, I don't see any reason, I think that covers it. I mean, you, there will be special exceptions, probably be like where he's at, because there's a turn, the truck may not be able to get there or something, that you might have a special exception, but for the most part, that's what we've said is in the ordinance.
And I think section D, Mr. Wingard, was actually your recommendation to add section D, and I just didn't read far enough, and that's my fault. I was just sitting there reading section A of the ordinance, but section D reflects exactly what you want to see happen.
But is this a travel lane?
Well, it'd be a violation now.
If this is a violation?
It is a violation.
Okay. Well, I wasn't hearing that up until now. I was under the assumption that this would, this would be allowed.
What I was saying is, Mr. Smith did not put that there.
I understand that.
Okay. He didn't put it there. My fault, because I knew there was another section in here somewhere, but section D covers exactly what we were talking about, which makes it a violation.
Okay. So that is a violation?
That is a violation.
Okay.
I think an important question is, when was the last time this ordinance was updated, like we're doing now?
I would be afraid to venture to guess. Let me see if I can pull it up here real quick.
Decades?
If you can give me a second, I'll tell you.
And I don't need an exact date, but you think decades, probably?
That would be my guess. Section 70, it appears, probably 2000, it looks like most of the ordinances were 2005 or 10.
Okay.
So you're looking anywhere from 10 to 15 years for a lot of these updated, a lot of these updated.
Well, I think it's good to look at things from time to time, and I appreciate the work, you know, we've done, the work you all have done for trying to update it and make it more modern, more up-to-date, so, but I guess, well, if we're passing it tonight, doesn't mean it's never gonna be updated again. We can always look at it, and if there's other issues. Of course, we can take instances like this, like a case-by-case basis, and if we keep getting those over time, we can see if we need to update it again, and what, we can look at it in six months or 12 months, and if we need to add something, or take something out, or change the wording, we can always do that.
I think the way to look at it is, is, we get, most of these complaints usually start in March through June, and as we get those complaints in the spring, we can kind of see exactly if the ordinance has addressed those complaints that we've made the changes to, or if it's something that is an enforcement issue, or exactly what the situation is, and then tweak these ordinances as we see how the citizens comply or don't comply with them.
But what got me...
Well, and it was my fault.
Yeah, because you led us to believe tonight that this would, this would not be in violation.
Well, under section A, that's correct, under the definition of a curb, but if you read further down under section D, when I knew, I knew there was another section that we added somewhere, and I just couldn't find it. I was thinking it was a completely different section, but Mr. Hartley called it, and section D does cover that travel lane.
Yeah. Because what I'd say, as far as going back and things, I mean, I see three or four things in this, through this process, where we've actually, some good that's come out of this, listening to folks. I mean, for example, talking about the additional cans, and so we corrected that, that the people that had them wouldn't be charged, the senior citizens talking about the way you apply for a discount, so we now went back and revised that and scaled it to be a percentage of poverty, and not that you can apply just one time a year, but any time throughout the year, so whenever you turn 65. And then with the bulk waste and yard waste, making some of these changes, clarifying it, that, you know, what is there, it's, will be picked up, basically. And so, you know, I think, you know, we've done a good job of listening to the complaints that people have had, their concerns, but I think as we've all said, and particularly Mr. Farnham, you know, it's, you always gotta look at these things and try to figure out how they change over time and how to best address it, but I'd be all in favor of, like I say, getting this passed tonight and getting it in effect, and then we can look at it again. But, but the part you were saying, it is in here, because I remember we had that, yeah, last time we had that discussion.
That's what I thought, and if this is a violation, then I have no issue with the passage tonight. But I was under the impression that this was not a violation.
Well, and I'd say, that's my fault, because I knew there was another section, I just couldn't find it quick enough, so...
Okay.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. Reading of ordinance by caption only.
This is, well, hold on, let me find the right one. An ordinance to amend chapter 70 of the city code of ordinances for chapter 70, solid waste.
All right. Looking for a motion, a second, for adoption of the ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. So motion from Mr. Wingard, and second from Mr. Mumpower. Is there any further discussion? All right. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. Item four, consider approval of assignment agreement with the Tennessee Valley Authority and amendments to landfill gas contract with Enginco. Staff report.
Counsel, I brought this up to counsel, I think, back in June, the first meeting in June, in regards to assigning the rights over in the TVA, Bristol, Virginia Utilities contract over. The city is a part of an agreement with TVA, which at this point, the city has no affiliation with BVU, and TVA is requesting that we assign the city, city's rights in that contract over to BVU, which the assignment is in the packet. Also, the landfill gas contract with Enginco has been amended in year 2020. The revenue that the city would receive would be 3% of the revenue, and 2021 would be 4% of the revenue, and 2022, it'd be 5% of the revenue through the end of the contract. One of the important things in regards to this is, at this point, the city's not receiving any revenue based upon the fact of the way previous contracts were arranged, and the city is owes Enginco $711,000 for some of the upgrades they've done to the gas system there. By virtue of doing this change and approving this, the city would no longer be responsible for that $711,000, and we would be receiving a portion of the revenue here very shortly.
All right. So seeing no public comments, looking for a motion, a second, on this.
A move that we approve the assignment agreement and amendments.
My second.
All right. So motion is made by Mr. Farnham to approve, and second from Mr. Hartley. Council discussion.
I'm still not comfortable with this. I've read this thing 14 times, and I can't talk about it all night, of the things I'm concerned about. But there's a lot going on with TVA, there's a lot going on with contractual arrangements between BVU and TVA. We've had an arrangement with Enginco, and Enginco's not complied with their side, we've not complied with our side necessarily to the letter of the contract. So this is a really complicated situation. You know, when you start assigning rights, you know, if things change that you're not foreseeing, you know, next month and the month after, and then you've already given away your rights to take any action and get anything in return, is unsettling, and I'm not sure I've got the answer. I just know it concerns me, and I can't, I can't get my mind around what the right path is, but I know, I just, I just don't know a good path that's better than where we are, and I'm concerned if we do this, it's gonna make it potentially worse if things go the direction we don't anticipate. So, so anyway, I think we got a lot more thinking to do on this one. I think this is a tough one.
Well, I understand your reservations, but we, we met with TVA, and, you know, the bottom line is, Enginco has been up there for however many years, and the contract, like every other contract before in this city, is poorly written. We've been up there using our man-hours, our, our grounds, and man-hours to maintain, and we've yet to receive one penny from Enginco. And the contract was written that we maintained this, we maintained that, and the debt has risen to over $700,000 that we're liable for with Enginco, because of different things. This is an opportunity here for the city to get out from underneath that $700,000 commitment and actually start receiving some dollars from this gas company, because we're no longer a utility provider on the city side. When the authority was established with BVU, they took all rights and powers with them, but this, this contract was in place under the city, and by all rights, I'm not an attorney, but we can't honor any power of utility, because we're not affiliated as a city with BVU anymore. All those rights and privileges was given away with BVU's authority. So it is very complicated, and it's gonna take attorneys to figure it all out. But TVA is okay with it, and they're the provider, and they're the ones with the contract with Enginco, and this seems to be the best avenue for all three parties involved, TVA, BVU, and Enginco. So I see no downside to this, which, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, you can't see through everything, but I see an opportunity to get rid of a liability and start making money, and that's what the city needs.
I think it, from the Enginco side, it does, it gets rid of a liability, it starts getting some positive cash flow, and from the agreement with TVA, that probably should have been done when BVU became an authority, separate from the city, just go ahead and clear that up, so...
Well, so, very seldom do you get to just get out from underneath $700,000, so I think this is a, this is a big opportunity for us, and, you know, the thing that, I believe it's been pointed out, you know, as it stands right now, we've made no money from this. So this, this gives us an opportunity to kind of change the narrative, and A, not owe them all this money, but B, actually get some money if they can start producing, you know, like they say they're going to. So it'll get us out from, out from under some stuff, and give us an opportunity to get some money. And I really, I hope that, you know, I look forward to BVU taking action on this soon and approving it as well. So, I mean, that's, that's what I've got to say. I think this is, this is a great opportunity for us. Is there any other discussion?
I was just gonna say, I appreciate, you know, the work of the city, because this, the percentages, 3%, 4%, 5% on the steps, increasing, it seemed like, you know, originally that was a lower rate, so I think folks have, with the city, have fought to try to get the city a little more money, a little higher percentage, so it's good seeing that, I appreciate that work.
All right. So if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
No.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. Item five, consider a supplemental appropriation of $199,413 to the fiscal year 2020 budget. The carryover items as listed below. These funds were received in fiscal year 2019 and/or were unexpended at 6/30/2019. Staff report.
Mayor and members of council, this is a supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year 20 budget for carryover of fiscal year 19 funds or unexpendable. for carryover of fiscal year nineteen funds or unexpended items for the general fund. Presentation of this appropriation on the regular agenda is consistent with the city's financial policies. And the total request is one hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars. The breakdown is up on the screen. Donation for the K-9 unit of five hundred dollars. Fire programs fund carryover of two thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. A donation for the animal shelter of one hundred dollars. Inmate holiday revenue funds received but not expended of fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. Dare program, um, two thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Street and engineering stormwater fees of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, for Clear Creek, you see capital funds there of forty-six thousand and seventy-six dollars. In fiscal year nineteen, um, an increased fee of two dollars per round specifically for capital items was implemented at Clear Creek. Forty-six thousand and seventy-six dollars was received in fiscal year for capital items. Um, nothing was expended. Also for Clear Creek, um, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars of total revenues over expenditures was due to the membership drive. The requested amount is to use these funds to pay off the current golf cart lease and lease new carts in this fiscal year. Right now, we're in the, um, end of a four-year lease, um, with a four thousand five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar monthly payment. Um, that annual payment pays off of August in twenty twenty. And that would be, um, the request to carry over those membership drive funds to terminate that lease early and, um, get additional carts, get new carts. And finally, city manager contingency funds, which were unexpended at June thirtieth. Um, the request is to carry those funds over to fiscal year twenty, um, for legal fees.
All right. Uh, seeing no public comments, I am looking for a motion and a second.
A move that we approve the supplemental appropriation of, uh, one hundred ninety-nine thousand uh, dollars, four hundred and thirteen dollars as listed.
Second.
All right. So a motion from Mr. Hartley and second from Mr. Farnum. Council discussion.
Okay, so if I'm reading that right, the capital funds for Clear Creek there, they made an additional forty-seven thousand dollars. And then they made an additional fifty-nine on a membership drive. And these are monies that are still in the account needing to be reallocated back to them for expenditure purchases?
At the end of, um, June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, that are available to be carried over.
Okay. And then the contingency fund of the city manager had a remaining balance of forty-nine-nine?
Yes, sir.
And that money is being asked to go back into what?
Fiscal year twenty, to be appropriated, to carry those monies over, um, into the legal fees, expenditure line item.
So you wanna take that forty-nine and, and earmark it in a line item, legal fees?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Okay.
We discussed that this morning.
Yeah, okay. And the, uh, Clear Creek, they're wanting to take that money and pay off a lease that they currently have, and then sign up for another lease for brand-new golf carts?
Yes.
And the lease that they're under right now is a four-year lease and they're three years in it?
Yes, it, um, it pays off August of twenty twenty.
Okay. And then they're gonna sign another four-year lease?
No, I think, uh, Mr. Wingard, and certainly I would defer to Mr. Barnes, he's here tonight. But I believe, it's my interpretation, that really the useful life of the, those carts is three years. So the intent would be to enter into a three-year lease, so that we get it back into a replacement cycle every three years.
That's where I was getting. If we are signing leases that outlive the product, then we gotta back up.
Yes, sir, that's the intent of this.
Okay.
Since we're talking about Clear Creek, I just wanted to say, I, I mean, I would say it's one of the city's best-kept secrets. We have a beautiful golf course, um, membership's been increasing because of the membership drive, and some good things are happening out there. So, uh, I think it's, it's good to see those numbers like that, so.
Yeah, I think Casey Barnes and his group's done a good job up there of lowering the costs and trying to move the golf course more towards self-sufficiency. I saw applauding for that. I think they, they've got some more work to do. I think the golf course is in, um, fairly decent shape. But I think the people that play out there would say there's still some areas that's gotta be addressed. Um, and so I think he's gotta be smart about how he uses these funds and address it properly. And, you know, make everybody happy, because it's gonna drive more, it's gonna drive more people to play, you know, when you, when you do the things that's needed. And, you know, it's, it's a nice lake. And so we're, we're still, you know, we're underutilizing that property. I mean, you got the golf course, but you got this really nice lake. And, and we gotta think about some more creative ways of, you know, utilizing that facility, you know, to help gain more revenues out there than ways we've not thought of yet. So, you know, keep working the problem, Mr. Barnes, and, uh, you've done a good job so far. And let's, let's see how else we can use that property out there to, you know, get some more cash flow.
Yeah, I'll just say, I think, I think one thing that's, um, kind of been touched on a little bit is, is there are increasing membership at, at Clear Creek. And it's, it's a good thing to have, you know, this problem that we've got almost sixty thousand dollars sitting here from, from new membership that's come in that, that we didn't have before. So, so I commend, you know, what all they're doing over there at the golf course. I've not been up there yet, because, uh, golf is not my forte. But, um, hopefully I'll get up there sometime and check it out. But I appreciate the, the growth there and, and that we're setting aside some money for capital funds, you know, for them to be able to do stuff to make it a little bit better. So, so I think this is, I think this is overall positive. Is there anything, anything else?
The only thing I wanted to say, the last thing I, I meant to mention was, you know, they, he's brought a lot of youth in out there and do youth golf. And, and I think people underappreciate how important that is for ki, getting the kids involved in, uh, activities like golf, and it's keeping them engaged in the community. And it's got a positive effect. And, um, and that's kind of going beyond golf. So I think he needs to talk about that more, people need to understand that more. I think there's a ton of youth that have went through a program out there that otherwise wouldn't. And it's given them a, a good outlook on life and things to do. So, so keep doing those kinds of things, too. I think that's important.
All right. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. Item six, consider closed session pursuant to Section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A-one, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, appointments. Looking for a motion and a second.
I would move that we, uh, enter into executive session for the reasons stated and also allow any necessary personnel to join us.
Second.
All right. So the motion is made by Mr. Hartley and seconded from Mr. Farnum. And if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. Item seven is consider appointments to boards and commissions. So we had several openings that, uh, that we needed to address. And, uh, we've been able to address some of them, and some of them we are not able to address. So for right now, we're going to set aside appointing someone to Highlands Community Services Board and the Ninth District Development Financing Committee. So we're gonna set those aside. Uh, so we didn't have anyone apply for the Board of Zoning Appeals, so that's still out there. Uh, for the Bristol Public Library, we're, uh, we're going to appoint Danny Peterson as our recommendation. For the Planning Commission, we're going to recommend Rick Watts. And for the IDA, we're going to recommend Dr. Jan Huffman. And, uh, there are two openings on the IDA, but we're only making one recommendation at this point.
I would also, um, you have two reappointments you need to make as well.
Yes, we do, excuse me. Uh, we're also going to appoint, uh, Planning Commission, Breann Forbes Hubbard and Jordan Pennington. And those are reappointments. So we have Rick Watts, Breann Hubbard, and Jordan Pennington for planning, and then Dr. Huffman only for IDA at this point. So I need a motion and a second. So right now, the only one that has no applicants is the Board of Zoning Appeals. The, the Highlands Community Service and Ninth District Development Financing, we, we have applicants for, but we just need a little bit more information on them. You know, on what their thinking is, what they would bring to the board and stuff, you know. So, so Board of Zoning Appeals, as of now, has no applicants, so.
Move that we, uh, make the appointments as presented.
All right. Motion from Mr. Hartley.
Second.
Second from Mr. Farnum. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Item eight, discussion of financing options for property acquisition.
I move that we table this, line up this.
All right. We got a motion to table.
Second.
Got a second. So if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. Next item we have is the consent agenda. What do we wanna do on this?
I missed one of these, I think it was that, uh, public school thing in the first, wasn't it?
The called meeting with the school board?
Yeah, I missed that one. So I need to, we need to set that one aside. That July one.
I'd, I'd move then that we'd approve the consent agenda except for the minutes from the July one twenty nineteen called meeting with the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools and consider it separately.
Okay, so we got a motion to approve everything in the consent agenda except for the minutes from the called meeting with the school board, so I'd need a second.
Second.
All right. So a motion from Mr. Hartley and second from Mr. Farnum. Uh, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right. So then we would need to vote separately on the approval of the minutes from the July first called meeting with the school board. Okay. So a motion and a second.
I move that we approve that.
Second.
Some motion from Mr. Farnum and second from Mr. Hartley. And if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mump, Mumpower.
Epstein.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right, we stand adjourned.